Thank you and welcome to today's Sister City Council Candidate Forum, brought to you in partnership with the League of Women Voters of Deschutes County and the City Club of Central Oregon, two organizations that are passionately nonpartisan. My name is Kimberly Scott and I am past president of the League of Women Voters of Deschutes County, and I'm honored to serve as moderator today. Thank you to the City Club's annual sponsors and the League of Women Voters, Deschutes County members. Without your support, we would not be able to bring you today's program. Today's live stream is made possible by Connect Central Oregon, a nonprofit launched with the assistance of OSU Cascade's Innovation CoLab. Our sponsors for the entire series of candidate forums are the Deschutes Public Library and Buchanan Schmidt LLC. We are grateful for their support. Our candidate forums are conducted according to the League of Women Voter Guidelines. All candidates who have filed in their race are invited to participate in our forums, and we hope to present voters with all participants. In the interest of fairness, we do not let an RSVP of regrets cancel a forum. We would like to thank the five Sister City Councilor candidates: Elizabeth Fisher, Susan Cobb, Jennifer Letts, Andrea Blum, and Gary Ross for joining us today. The top two candidates in Sisters who received the highest number of votes shall hold office for four years. The candidate receiving the third highest number of votes shall hold office for two years. We will start with opening statements. Each candidate will have two minutes for their introductions and opening remarks. For each question, each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer, and at the end, each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement. For opening and closing statements, we have randomly selected the order. The order of who answers each question first will be rotated. So let's get started. Our first question or our first opening statement will go to Elizabeth. You have two minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Fisher. I've lived in Sisters country for over 12 years. I went to Sisters High School and got a bachelor's degree in chemical engineering from Oregon State University. The people of Sisters probably know me best right now as the girl who stood out on the corner with anti-racism signs all summer by the elementary school and the founder of Sisters Fight for Social Justice. Sisters Fight for Social Justice is an intergenerational group of Sisters Country community members that have come together to fight for social justice and equity for all. My goal if I'm elected is to amplify the voices in Sisters that are most often overlooked, including but not limited to those of citizens under 30, LGBTQ+, BIPOC, unhoused, and undocumented community members. I believe that people are what matter. Thus, I plan to keep their interests in the forefront of any decisions I make. As far as policy goes, I believe that we need creative transportation solutions to decrease traffic congestion and make greener walking and biking options more accessible. We need to invest in affordable housing initiatives that allow for greater diversity and socioeconomic backgrounds of community members. A sustainable growth plan which allows for these projects without jeopardizing our green spaces is a must. As some of you know, the city of Sisters just entered into a new contract with the Deschutes County Sheriff's Office. Over the next year, they will be working to develop a strategic plan to dictate how Sheriff's Office personnel conduct themselves in Sisters. I plan to be tough in my handling of this plan and demand transparency and community oversight. I will work with advocacy groups to ensure the wording of policy within this plan does not pose a risk to our disadvantaged communities, such as the unhoused, BIPOC, or undocumented communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Susan, you're next. You need to unmute.
Hi. I did unmute. Is it working now?
You are now. Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, I'm Susan Cobb. I'm an Air Force brat, hail from Florida. I lived in Guam, Alaska, Washington, Germany, and Nevada. And in Nevada, I went to Reno High School, and I graduated from it and from the University of Nevada at Reno with a Bachelor of Arts in Artistry. I bring this creativity to bear on all I do. I worked for AT&amp;T, Nevada Bell, Pacific Bell, Southwestern Bell, started as a long-distance operator on cord boards, and went to supervisor, and then I became a copy service artist after I graduated from the university. I was then interested in software development, and I became an analyst and a systems analyst with the Bell System. And then I graduated to being a project manager, working with teams of analysts. I retired after 27 years. I formed a corporation, Cubonix Inc., contracted as a project manager in Munich, Amsterdam, London, and Prague, and I retired after five years of doing that. While I was in Prague, I bought property in Sisters. That's a long story, not going to hear it today. Moved back to San Francisco, studied and became a massage therapist for four years, working at Burke Williams Spa in San Jose. And then I retired from that and I moved to Sisters in 2006. I worked at the Stitch and Post for four years. I learned to make quilts, which I love doing. Retired for the last time in 2010. My background of artistry, experiences with diverse working groups, and living in different locales, my energy for new challenges and to do for others are what I bring to the Sister City Council. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Susan. Jennifer, you're next.
Hi. My name's Jennifer Letts. Thank you for listening today. I have not lived in Sisters very long, only about a year and a half, but my family did move to Deschutes County almost 40 years ago, so very familiar with the area. I've been playing here and shopping here and traveling through this area in Sisters country for almost four decades. I have a background in sustainability and a master's degree in that, and I've worked in that in the public and private sector. And if you want to know one thing about me and how I would function on a city council is that I really come from a place of decision-making from that sustainability background. I look at every problem or opportunity through three lenses. How is it going to affect us environmentally? How is it going to affect us economically? And how is it going to impact our society, our community, no matter who you are? So every opportunity and issue that comes up, those are the lenses I look through to make those decisions. And I find that when we look at things through those, you know, three channels, we can make some really fantastic decisions that benefit everyone. I also have a background in land management. I worked as a wildland firefighter for a number of years, and I have a lot of strong community connections with land managers in the area, from the federal government to firefighting organizations. And so I plan to leverage those connections to make sure that our community is fire-safe. Wildfire is obviously a very important topic, not only in our community, but statewide and throughout the West, and looking forward to helping Sisters become one of the more resilient communities in all of the West. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Andrea, you're next.
Hello, I'd like to thank City Club and League of Women Voters for putting on this candidate forum. It's difficult to pick it out and meet the public because of the pandemic, and so I really appreciate this opportunity. My name is Andrea Blum, and I have been on the council for the last five years. I'm a native Oregonian and moved to Sisters country in 1988. And if any of you are old enough to remember, that was when Deschutes County was in a recession. And it was also a time when Sisters was in somewhat of a malaise. It was still an active tourist town, but it didn't have much else to offer people who lived in the community other than just the blessing of a small committed community. After moving to Sisters country, we moved out onto bare land. So we had to clear the land and learn very quickly all of the issues with determining whether or not I could have a septic system or not, whether I could dig a well or not. And I was able to get a job with Deschutes County, which was an extreme blessing because I was able to work with the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners, and they touch everything to do in the county. And so I learned about land use laws, and I learned about public records, and I learned about all the terminology that people have talked about when you are involved in government. And I was also able to learn a lot about the different communities that are in central Oregon, like Leupine and Redmond and Sisters. And so after getting the nugget in my mailbox once a week, I was very interested in how Sisters was progressing. And pretty soon, it was having festivals, et cetera.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Gary, would you like to do your opening statement?
Yeah. Hi, I'm Gary Ross. I've been 20 years of experience as a board of directors member of a special taxing district in the valley. I have a background in education. I lived in Clamath County. I lived in the Sun River and now in Sisters. I love it a lot here. In my time in education, I had an opportunity to be both a professional technical teacher, a computer science teacher, computer science director, and a library media director, which seems kind of odd and strange, but when you work with the kinds of things I work with, that's what you do. In my time in the valley, I lobbied in Washington DC for regional... Sorry, my brain just froze. For regional issues, I worked with both the city, the school district, the park district, the fire district, and the local utility to ensure that public money was spent in a way that was best served for the public, that we didn't do one project and have someone else dig it up and have to do it all over again, that kind of a thing. I think that Sisters is at a crossroads. It has a lot in front of it with a comprehensive plan update and a potential UGB boundary update. I think having citizenry who want to be involved, as all of us do, is important. I have served three years on the Sisters Budget Committee and also three years on the Sisters Park Advisory Board. I feel open space is important, and I also think that as we look to what we're going to do with UGB expansion, should we, we need to pay particular attention to family wage housing so that the people who work here can live here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gary. Now we'll start with the questions. Susan, you're first on this. More developments are planned in the forest-urban interface surrounding Sisters. How would you help Sisters not become a Detroit or Paradise California fire disaster?
I'm sorry. Could you repeat that question? I'm sorry, I was distracted trying to turn my mute on and off.
Certainly, happy to. More developments are planned in the forest-urban interface surrounding Sisters. How would you help Sisters not become a Detroit or Paradise California fire disaster?
Well, I think I really, myself, do not really need to do much except support what's happening at the fire department and the organizations working with the fire department and the city itself. I don't know if you noticed the nugget today, but there was an excellent series of articles in the nugget today, reaching out to the public and telling them about forums in the future that they can go to to learn how to protect their homes and how to be prepared for an emergency, and discussions about these forums that the fire department offers. When I was a member of the... the president for the Timber Creek Homeowners Association, I attended a couple of those seminars as a representative of the homeowners, and I found it very, very informative. And what I would do is advocate our citizenry to attend those and have more of them made more public, because it's very, very important. We are in climate change. We are going to have more fires. We are going to have bigger fires, and we need to work with the people that know what to do to protect our forests and to preserve them and to make them safe for us.
Thank you very much, Susan. Jennifer, you're next. Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, thank you. This is an issue that is dear and dear to my heart. I'm a former wildland firefighter, as is my spouse, and I feel I have a lot of education and experience to bring to the city council on this topic. I think what we've all learned the hard way the last few years is that wildfire isn't kind of what we're used to of a fire starting way out in the forest somewhere and maybe slowly encroaching and coming towards a community. A wildfire can start within our community. A wildfire can start miles away, and a strong wind can push embers into our community and start fires miles away from the flame front. So it's kind of a two-pronged approach. One, or three-pronged actually. One is kind of continuing fire education in our community, making sure that whether you live on the edge of the forest or right in downtown, you know, you have as much responsibility to take care of your property as anybody else does and to reduce fuels on your property. The second is to just make sure we're working with all of our partners, and there's a lot of them to work with. Fortunately, in central Oregon, we have the Forest Service, Sisters Camp Sherman Fire District, the County Forester, lots of other entities and groups, Project Wildfire, lots of resources there. And the third is to really work on codes, building codes with the county and the state so we can be more fire resilient.
Thank you very much. Andrea, same question. Would you like me to repeat the question? You need to unmute. Very good. Go ahead.
Okay. The city has been considering what to do to limit our wildfire exposure for a number of years, because it's up close and personal to our community, that's for sure. We recently had a grant that allowed us to get some environmental agencies to look at our exposure and to come up with some ideas about what we could do. Through that, we've worked with our local fire department to see what kinds of things we could actually implement locally. So locally, we're working with the fire department to have volunteers that will go neighborhood to neighborhood, neighborhoods out, what are the easy, low-hanging fruit ideas that will definitely help prepare us for fire. And then on a regional level, we're working with the county and the Forest Service to how to help so that when the wildfires do come this direction, we know where to put our resources, how to notify people, how to evacuate, where to go, do all the things that our communities in Detroit and elsewhere have learned the hard way. Also, building codes. We can do something with the building codes to make us more fire resistant. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Andrea. Gary, your turn on this. Would you like me to repeat the question? Please unmute.
No, thank you. I'm fine with the question. I want to agree with what's been said to this point. There's been a lot of research done with ways that people who live in this urban forest environment, boundary environment, could do to protect themselves. Most easiest one, of course, is defensible space, but we also need to look very heavily at some of the newer building materials that are highly fire resistant. Nothing that is more frustrating than to walk, go into one of our communities around the area and see roofs that are extremely flammable in an environment such as that. It could be something as simple as new soft vents that don't allow sparks to enter into the attic space. It can be green space. That certainly is one of the things that slows fire down is a green area, which is tough to do here in this environment. I think we need to also think about training individuals on how to get out of the area should something happen, be ready to go, have a bolt bag, because we can't always prevent what's going to occur. But like I said, defensible space, building materials, and I think careful planning as we look at these communities to ensure that we have the right kind of building materials being used and that we have enough room for citizenry to be able to get out if they have to get out. And we also need to keep in mind the fire sometimes comes from the other direction through the grasslands. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gary. Elizabeth, same question.
So I think that a very important step that the city can take is on building codes and just making sure that those new developments that are put in are going to be fire resistant, and so just updating those codes for new developments. I do think we also need to work with county, state, and federal governments on forest management. Little of the forest is actually within city limits, some of it is. But I do think that forest management is a huge part of it. What my fellow candidates have said about education is always going to be important. People need to know where to go. People need to know how to make defensible spaces, how to update their houses to meet fire resistance codes that we could put into place. So I think all those are important, as well as green spaces. Another thing that is not a short-term fix, but will help in the long run, is reducing our environmental impact. Where, I mean, the environmental impact of the city of Sisters isn't what's causing wildfires, but if every city reduces that, then we will reduce the severity of our wildfires.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Jennifer, you're first on the next question. Last year, Sister City survey revealed traffic and speeding were the biggest concerns of Sister citizens. What do you think should be done to help traffic issues in Sisters?
A number of things can be done to help traffic. I know that's a really hot topic here for anybody that lives in town or even anybody who visits or travels through the city. I know this morning I was biking my child to school, and, you know, we almost got hit one and a half times. But that's okay. But I think there's a couple of relatively easy fixes. One is that we need to take a hard look, working with ODOT, on speed limits in certain areas of the city, inside the city limits, but also outside the city limits. There's definitely people coming in hot to the downtown core area that could be slowed down a little bit, you know, quarter mile or so before they get into the city. But another way, another angle to look at this is to, you know, work on affordable housing. You know, a lot of the people, a lot of the traffic is coming from people who work out in the area, work in the city, and but can't live here, and they're traveling from other communities to work here, and they're exacerbating our traffic problem. The more people we can get to live in the community, we're going to be able to lessen our traffic impacts, and the more, stronger our community is regarding to pedestrian and bicycle traffic, then that will reduce it as well.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. Andrea, same question.
Yes, we took the survey that got this results in an effort as we were going to renegotiate our contract with the Deschutes County Sheriff's Office. And we wanted to make sure that in negotiating that contract, we include issues that were most important to the local people. And I think in one way, it was good that those issues rose to the top because it meant that robberies and murderers and house break-ins were not a significant issue. For the most part, people feel it's safe. Sisters is a safe community and a wonderful place to live. So addressing a high-woogie issue is predominantly something that we've been working on since day one on the council. When I moved here in 1988, I even remember the discussions about making two different corrections. Right now, we're working roundabout in on one end of town. We're working on another roundabout on the other end of town. When those are completed, we'll be able to divert the traffic to a separate alternative route, which will... it won't alleviate the traffic on Cascade because those are tourists coming to central Oregon. There's no way to keep them from coming. But it will at least get some of the big trucks. Everybody will appreciate that. And then moderating the speeds coming into and going out of town will help significantly as well.
Thank you very much, Andrea. Gary, you're next. Would you like me to repeat? Please unmute. Yes.
I think this is a topic that's near and dear to my heart, living just off of Jefferson and Locust interchange and seeing how many times our guests in this community, either through the campground or from five pines on bicycles or on foot, have come close to being hit by folks trying to shoot down Jefferson Street to beat the traffic on Cascade. And if you don't get ahead of the car that was in front of you when you pulled off, then you weren't successful. And so there's a lot of that going on, not to mention the fact that we have some of our streets that are fairly wide and fairly straight, and it encourages, shall we say, less than sane behavior on the part of some of our citizens in terms of speed. I think that we can do some things. For instance, I think we've got to look at some one-way streets, but not to go all the way through. And I can't go into the design here because it's a little complicated, but I think there's a way that you can make it less attractive to utilize Washington-Jefferson, per se, as an alternative to Cascade. I think once you make those streets one-way, you can then do some bicycle lanes and create a pedestrian-bicycle path that's separated from the traffic. And I also think that we could look to ways to get vehicles off our streets during large events, perhaps looking to do some parking somewhere outside of town with a shuttle bus that takes people back and forth. Because one of the things that happens is that we start filling our streets up with vehicles that forces pedestrians in.
Thank you very much, Gary. Appreciate your answer to that. Elizabeth, you're up next.
So I think that the roundabout is one of the biggest things that we're working on with traffic right now. And I think it's a good idea, and I definitely want to, if I'm elected, keep pushing forward on that and make sure it happens in a timely manner, which is always hard with government, I know. But I also think that we need to be really intentional with marking that alternate route so that the trucks and cars who are just driving through know that it's there. I believe that the speed limit signs with the flashing numbers, like the speedometers, can be very helpful in getting cars to slow down. So I do think we could use a few more of those. I know we already have a few, and I think those are helpful, or at least helpful for me sometimes if I don't realize how fast I'm going. So I think those are some of the big ones. I definitely think encouraging people to walk and bike more would just decrease the amount of traffic, which could help make it safer. So that's what I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Susan, you're next.
On the traffic, it is an experience of everyone who lives here that in the summertime, going north across or south across Cascade Avenue, Highway 20, is sometimes next to impossible. So we've all learned how to go right when we actually want to go across or left when we want to go across the other way. But what... And I also agree with the other candidates that the roundabout at the west end of town is great, and having a roundabout again at the east end of town, I believe, is going to help dramatically. But it won't change the amount of traffic flow, both for consumer needs to move items across the country and for tourists. And so what I'm concerned about now is we have new developments coming in that are going to increase our own traffic load. And so I'm... in my role as citizen and hopefully in my role as candidate, if I'm a council member if I'm elected, is I'm going to work with the city managers and with the city on these new projects to try to figure out mitigating ways of getting the flow of traffic to be smoother than what it looks like it will be with some of the developments that are going in on the east.
Thank you, Susan. I appreciate your answer. We will now be going on to the third question. Andrea, you're first up for this. What will you do to support affordable housing and make sure that it fits aesthetically into the Sisters community?
I've had the opportunity to work with the neighbor impact in affordable housing apartment project that we were able to get in in the last couple of years. It was in the making, get it to become Sisters, and Sisters... And Sisters had to put in a hundred thousand dollars to help it over the financial hump to make it viable for our community. It is a great project and does fit well, I think, within uh the zoning that it's in. And it has helped a number of our local people who had children, who were living in the suburbs, uh, be able to have permanent uh housing within the boundaries of Sisters. And their kids can get a decent life for themselves by uh living in a great neighborhood, right? Where they can walk to all the essential services and to the school. So we're very happy with that. We've set a goal of having at least ten percent of our housing be affordable. And in the next project that is coming before us, uh, the developers have indicated that they are anticipating that their clientele will be available for people who are in Sisters area. So as more workforce housing is built, that actually frees up some of the more affordable places for uh people that can't even afford that. So I, we're doing a lot.
Thank you very much, Andrea. Gary, same question?
I have a timer this time. Hey, uh, yeah, you know, affordable doesn't have to be ugly. And I think that's the, the first thing. A lot of developers build affordable housing the cheapest they can because it's a low-margin product compared to higher-end homes. And I think that's a function of both the planning commission and the city council to ensure that anything that gets done in the realm of affordable housing is attractive. And, and it can be, there's no real reason. And there are many examples in Bend, if you drive around, of some multifamily housing that blends in very nicely with the neighborhoods that it's in and, and is attractive and makes you want to live there. And I, I think that's the big thing. So it's, it to me, it's a, it's a council being involved. It's making sure the planning commission understands that um we're going to want to see things that aren't just sort of cookie cutter, stamped-out slabs of, of buildings. This is almost like a dormitory, really. And that's not what we want for our, our community, and that is what we want for our citizenry. Also, I think you do need to look at where it's located to be sure that we have the ability for youth and, and adults to walk town, drive town, or bicycle town without creating more traffic issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gary. Elizabeth, you're next.
Okay, so affordable housing is something that's uh very near to my heart because I would not have been able to move to Sisters uh twelve years ago if it wasn't for the affordable housing that um had already been made. I lived in the apartments on Tamarack Street uh that were one of the very first affordable housing options in Sisters. So affordable housing is very near to my heart. I think because of that, I will advocate very strongly um for doing whatever it takes to make sure that there's more. Um, I think that affordable housing allows us to have a greater diversity and socioeconomic perspectives within our community, which is very important. So I, yeah, I mean, I will do everything within my power to um advocate for places for our people to live. So I don't know that I have many specific plans, as I don't know. I mean, I do think that apartments um designed within our aesthetic would be helpful, um, because apartments allow more people with a smaller footprint, um, which allows us to still have more green spaces. Um, and they can be built at a better quality for cheaper, so.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Susan, same question?
Yeah, I think um I totally agree that we need to have affordable housing for the reasons uh specified. Having employees that work in our community be able to have a home here rather than driving from somewhere else. And again, gets back to that point another candidate made about reducing um the traffic flow. On the, having it be um blending into our community and, and being um beautiful, I think that just is all part of the planning that the, the city uh managers present to the council. And the council, as a council member, I would be looking for the aesthetic qualities of those affordable homes, for sure. And I would definitely not hold back any opinions if I didn't think that they were um of high quality. I think also, we, we do have Habitat for Humanity, uh, which I, I think is a fabulous organization. I also believe that it would be good to engage with other um uh low-income builders and see what they could bring to bear to our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Jennifer, same question?
Yeah, affordable housing is, is a critical issue in our community because it's tied to so many um other uh challenges and opportunities we have here in Sisters. I, you know, to address the, the visual aspect of it, that's, you know, that's a topic that's brought up a lot. Um, a lot of people bristle at, there's a term affordable housing because they feel like it's gonna be some sort of an eyesore. That, that doesn't have to be the case, or, you know, not certainly a code option. Something that the planning commission can, can tackle if they want. Um, I've traveled through Pine Meadow Village a number of times, dozens of times before I ever realized that many of those buildings are actually multifamily homes. Until I really looked at them. So they did a really successful job of, of making, you know, beautiful multifamily houses. You know, this is not an issue that is unique to us. This is a very common issue in, in the West and gateway communities. And Sisters is definitely a gateway community to the, to the activities and, and resources around us. So I think that we need to really cast a wide net and see what our, our friends and neighbors are doing in other communities and other states um to address this issue, you know. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a little bit of a sticky one because you have to also address um second homes and, and um vacation rentals in this issue. But I, I think there's a lot of room for creativity and to get more affordable housing in our community.
Thank you, Jennifer. Gary, you'll be the first on the next question. What ideas do you have to improve the homeless situation, including helping those living in the woods near Sisters?
That's a tough one. I think that, first of all, we need to look at services uh to allow these individuals to have access to healthcare, to have access to hygiene, to have access to safe, warm places in the winter. That's the first step. So whether it's a warming shelter, which I know is somewhat controversial for some, uh, or uh something more permanent, year-round, I think that's where we start. As far as uh how do we try to bring the homeless into the community itself, it comes right back to the things we, very things we've been talking about. Some of our homeless are working poor. They have two jobs, they have three jobs, they can't afford to live here, and they can't afford to commute. And I think that, that we have to look at ways that we can bring housing in that allows those folks on the fringe to have a place to live. And I, I think looking at some of the things that have been done in the valley, where you have uh perhaps a cluster kitchen with small habitated units around it, where people can come and live, and, and the money that they pay for rent goes towards a first and last down payment in a permanent place to live. That's been quite successful in some parts of Eugene. So uh just some thoughts, there's no easy fix, and I'm not gonna say I have it, but those are just some thoughts I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Elizabeth, you're next.
So I would not be opposed to exploring a um housing-first system. I know in a lot of cities and communities, um, that's actually more economically beneficial than having to um essentially pay for the people um on the street is just to give them housing, no questions asked. And then let them grow into the person that they are. Um, in, that would obviously be something that we would have to discuss at length and um would be a long process. In lieu of that, I think uh one thing we could do right now, which is something that um the, some of the people who work at the cold-weather shelter, which cannot be open this year due to COVID, um, are trying to make happen, is just to have the uh Creekside Camp open for trailers during that time. Because many of our homeless have been gifted travel trailers by community members that they can live in. But during the winter, if you don't have a power hookup, you are gonna freeze. And so if Creekside was kept open, which they've been, um, I know they've talked to Corinne Muesley, the city manager, I don't know if they've brought it to the council yet, but that's something they're really trying to make happen, and I think would be an easy fix. So, thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Susan, you're next.
Well, I didn't know about um that idea that Elizabeth just passed along. And I think that on Creekside, I think that's a wonderful idea. I also think that uh these little tiny homes that you see now in some of the big cities that are interspersed in different neighborhoods are uh to allow people that had been houseless to now have a house. I, I totally believe that once you have a shelter in a place that you can wash your hands, brush your teeth, and, you know, change your clothes, that you can then begin to have a better life. Uh, you know, obviously, living out in the forest is not gonna be a good life, and especially is horrible for children, you know, people, the families that have been thrown out of their homes for lack of funds to pay because they don't have a job, because they lost it because of COVID. So we really need to, um, as a city council, need to look at this really quickly because uh I think the amount of hu- uh houseless people are going to grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Jennifer, you're next.
Yeah, as, as others have said, this is a really complicated issue. And we, we tag on the word homeless to um a, a problem. But, but the, the clients under that umbrella have many different um issues and backgrounds. You have everybody from, you know, a woman escaping an abusive relationship, you know, to a family where we have, maybe the parents are working multiple jobs but just can't get enough money for housing. Um, all the way to people with mental health issues, all the way to, you know, people with criminal records. You know, so it has to be kind of a multi-pronged approach. I think that the, the tumult of twenty twenty has been good in the respect that it's kind of thrown the, the shades open on, on this issue, among other issues. And we're talking about, talking about it a lot more. And I think partnering with the, the county is going to be um a really great opportunity in the future to really help them um with their, their available services that they have now, and also helping them to nudge them to, to grow the services available, you know, to these people who struggle with housing and mental health issues. Uh, also, it's really important to get these things off of the plates of our, our law enforcement, you know, the sheriff's department and, and our federal law enforcement, uh, federal land manager, law enforcement agents. They're not social workers, and this isn't a job that they need to be doing or, or want to do. And uh, but yeah, so if I feel a lot of partnership with the county, I think will help out here.
Thank you, Jennifer. Andrea, you're next. You need to unmute? Andrea, you need to unmute. Sorry. Thank you.
The city has been working with um local homeless advocates and our N representatives and our Habitat for Humanity representatives. They've come to us a number of times uh to indicate that there were certain issues that the city could help out with. One of those issues was uh as we built restrooms in our parks that had shower facilities, that they asked us to put in porn uh token-operated showers, so that they could give out tokens to homeless people who could not afford uh to pay to use the showers. That gave them the opportunity to be able to uh get ready for jobs, interviews and things like that. We've, we've helped with the cold-weather shelter in the winters. We've, we get the information from the Forest Service. They come and do presentations about some of the people that are in the forest that wander into town. And the fact that there are many of them who would not take advantage of shelter if we had one. So we've been working with the county who has a homeless advocate and trying to get them to come more often to Sisters to try and find out what are the needs of the people that are in Sisters. Thank you.
Andrea. Elizabeth, you'll be first for this next question. Civil discourse is a major tenet of City Club, League of Women Voters, and Citizens for Community group of Sisters. Will you pledge to follow the C4C guidelines?
So I've had some interaction with C4C. Not sure that I remember the guidelines off the top of my head, but um I definitely believe that civil discourse is how things get done. So I, I don't know that I can make that pledge, as I don't know what they are. But um I can pledge to participate in civil discourse whenever possible and just respect other people. Um, I feel like one of the big issues we're facing right now with all of our debates and protests and anger um is just, comes with dehumanizing the other side. Um, and I feel like that's not the way to get anything done. So I feel like we just have to look at each other as human beings and have those um difficult conversations. I believe um that's a lot of why I'm running for council is just to bring those difficult conversations that we can no longer ignore. But yeah, I, I will promise to um approach them in a civil manner and respectfully. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Susan, same question?
Yes, um, I too have been involved with C4C um initially, and then uh life happened. But I am uh attending an, a C4C meeting coming up uh this week. I'm pretty excited about it, um, that the uh city manager will be participating in. So anyway, I, as to taking the pledge, I totally agree with the uh items on the little card that they give you. And the primary one that I think is most important is listening. I think we all need to listen and um take in what people are saying and try not to judge until we understand their perspective. And um that way, you can be civil because you're appreciating someone else's perspective, even though you may not agree with it. So um I come from that feeling, and I try to uh emulate that. Sometimes listening is hard, and I think that's um a job that we all need to step up to. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Susan. Jennifer, you're next.
I've attended uh, boy, dozens of City Club uh events over the years, and I really enjoyed them and, and continue to. I think that they do great work. I attended the one that actually, you know, addressed uh the creation of C4C in Sisters. And, and this was even before I, I lived in Sisters because I was a little bit afraid of moving to Sisters because there was a lot of uh angst in the community a few years ago. Um, and it was giving the community a bad reputation outside of the community. And um the ability for that organization and other people within Sisters to um grab the wheel and, and turn that ship around and take a negative and turn it into this, this great positive communication. I think it was fantastic. And uh, so I think what other people were saying about, um, you know, listening is, is really important. Tenant of, of, you know, the work that C4C does and City Club. And I really encourage people um to participate in government. And it's a nice-sized community where it's easy to participate. It's easy to reach out to people who work for the city or city councilors or people in committees. And it's also really easy to participate in, in many of the um uh boards and committees and coun- you know, councils that are actually actively recruiting right now. So I really uh encourage people to apply to one of them.
Thank you very much. Andrea, you're next on the question? Unmute? Andrea, you need to unmute?
Looking on it, but it doesn't change. Okay. Um, I was on council before C4C was developed. And it was a rough time. People were Um, I was on council before C4C was developed and it was a rough time. People were accusatory and, uh, not being kind, let's just say, the, the call of the day. So, when C4C started formulating, we saw it as huge positive and programs that they have put on that I have attended have helped me understand how to de-escalate a situation that might have otherwise gone another direction, to, uh, listen with both ears, not stopping to think about what I'm gonna say before they have a chance to finish, uh, to be kind even if you don't agree with the person and try and find some common ground because there always is some common ground in the middle that you can both agree on. And I think it's been an ableist community and I, I agree with all of its recommendations as far as how to get along in the community and, and work with other people and to improve the community as a whole.
Thank you very much, Andrea. Gary, same question.
Yeah, uh, certainly have no problem in saying that I would attempt as best I can to follow the concepts or precepts of C4C. Uh, you know, uh, the community has a ways to go yet in terms of some of our citizenry and civil dialogue. Uh, I'm sure that, uh, Elizabeth has seen some of it when she was standing on the street corners and people can buy in and express their dismay at what she was saying. Uh, you sometimes see it in some of the social media sites that are, are dedicated to Sisters where people are, feel very free to criticize and condemn those whose views are not the same as theirs. And sometimes you see it in the nugget, in the letters to the editor. I think that for this community to be successful and move forward, you need to have a process and methodology for people to have civil dialogue. And I'm a hundred percent for it and, and some of the work that's been done with the Visioning Project and other things with C4C, I, I think are allotable and plottable and I'm happy to, uh, do what I can to be a part of it and to support it and to bring the precepts of it forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gary. Next question, Susan, you're up first. What decisions of the current council do you disagree with and if any, and how would you have undertaken them differently and why?
Well, I am going to not disagree. And the reason I'm not going to disagree is I feel that judging from the sidelines and, um, saying, well, for example, when the tree was cut down and the person was only fined half of that amount, some people in town were upset because it was too little and others wanted it to be too mu- much more or, um, or felt that they should have paid the original price and others were wanting the person thought, felt it was good that they paid the lower price. And so, uh, but that's judging from the sidelines. And on a city council, you're sitting there, you're getting all the information, you're hearing from the management team at, at the, at city and to sit, for me to sit back and say, well, they should have done this. I don't, I don't think it's fair and so I won't judge.
Thank you very much, Susan. Jennifer, you're next for the question. You need to unmute?
Thank you. There it is. I, uh, don't follow what the city council does with a microscope. I can't speak to the question, um, very well, um, but I, I can say there's, I think a few things, I think that, that need to be maybe addressed, uh, better, um, more. And, uh, yeah, I think we have brought up the wildfire issue. I think that's certainly been, you know, addressed over the years. I, I feel like we're behind the curve on that and, you know, there's definitely more, um, that can be done, um, now and maybe had, that should have been done in the, in the past. Overall, I, I think the council, you know, does a good job. And, you know, I, I think Susan brought up a great point that it's, uh, you know, I don't, I certainly don't wanna, um, you know, judge from afar either. I've, you know, been on, uh, panels, I've worked in, in government, you know, committees and planning commissions and worked in the federal government and it's, um, yeah, it's easy to judge when you're on the outside, um, the work that people are doing on the inside. Um, but, uh, for the most part, I think over time that the council has done well and they have a good working relationship with the city and the city manager and would really like to get on the council and, and build on that and, and, um, and move forward. Thank you.
Andrea, you're next.
Um, there have been times when the council has not been 100% united. Some of the issues that come to mind, uh, when we were to have discussions on marijuana, when we had discussions on how various summertime weekend events should be handled. And even on, you know, some simple things, you know, who should get the grants that the city puts out. But we have been very, very lucky in that the areas where we didn't feel comfortable, we were able to work through those issues and come to a consensus that we were all able to live with. I can count on one hand the time that we, uh, times that we didn't have a full council in support of the eventual end product. And that's what you have to do. You have to learn about it, hear what other councillors' concerns are, talk with the staff about how to mitigate those concerns and then come to, together on a product that everybody can support because we, one of the things the city doesn't like and that's when councillors are divided on how to move forward. And right now, we're doing very well at moving together at one speed. So, appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Andrea. Gary?
I think that, uh, anytime you're in public service and you're in a position to make decisions that affect the public, some of them are not going to be popular and some of them are not necessarily going to be easy. Um, you know, I was asked this question, uh, I think by the, or the, Ben Bulletin or something and I, I kind of scrambled around and said, well, you know, maybe not letting the developer off so easy on the affordable housing because I, that's near and dear to my heart and I feel like you commit to it, you should do it. But that's being picky. And I think that, that you said it well when you said consensus is key. Uh, in my time on the Malamaline Board, there were many things we didn't agree on and we knew that we couldn't come to a positive vote. We tabled it and we, and we worked on trying to make it palatable to all members of the board so that we could then have a consensus agreement on what to do. And I, again, in 13 years, I can probably count on one hand the number of times when we had a divided, uh, uh, vote and I would work the same way with the, if I were on the city council to ensure that, um, everybody is heard, every opinion is considered and that I would formulate my decision, not on what I necessarily believe, but what I, what I think is best for the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Elizabeth, your turn.
So, I realize that being on council is a tough job, um, and like the other candidates have said, until you're there, you don't really know what you would do. Um, I do think that I can bring a fresh perspective to the council, um, that they're not really looking at right now. Uh, being 22 years old, there's things I see that they just don't. Um, and that's not their fault, but, um, one thing that I do not necessarily agree with that they did, um, is with the new Sheriff's Office contract, not putting some stipulations in stone before signing the contract. Um, I think, believe that there are ways, um, essentially, they're giving themselves a year within the contract to get this strategic plan out, um, when I think some of those things probably should have been set from the get-go. But I do realize they had to work with the sheriff on that, um, and it's all a lot of red tape and back and forth, um, and they needed a new contract. So, I can't exactly judge. I do however, think that if I was on the council, I would bring in some ideas they wouldn't necessarily think of. So.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Jennifer, you have the next, start of the next question. What are the strengths and weaknesses you will bring to the Sisters Council and what do you need to work on to be a better council member?
Well, I think the, the, the main strength I would bring to, uh, the city council and Sisters is bringing a, a different generational, um, viewpoint to the council, um, and a working family to the council. Um, I have also a lot of background with my sustainability background in, in, um, urban planning, transportation. I feel those areas are, you know, certainly hot topics, um, especially with the comprehensive plan being, um, rewritten in the next few years. And I think I can add a lot to that. Um, I'm als- I also take these things seriously. Um, it's a volunteer gig and sometimes people will treat it like that. Um, I will show up. I will do the reading. Um, I think that's important to say and point out. Um, otherwise, I think there's just, um, a learning curve. It's gonna be, I think the challenge will be personally for me, if elected, it will probably continue to be kind of a constricted, uh, format, um, not being able to be in a room with the constituents and with the other councillors and staff members all the time to be working on things. I think that would be, that's gonna be a, a challenge for me. Um, but we're all in that boat together. So, um, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Andrea, you have the question.
Yes, um, I think my past experience is my strength. Uh, we have three council positions that are up for election and of the remaining two people on council, one of them has only been on council for two years. So, it would be very, um, time-consuming for the city to move forward with three brand-new councillors who were on the learning curve of being a city councillor. I've helped develop the goals and, uh, budget that we are currently working on. And so, I'm familiar with where we are in the process of meeting those goals. I have worked my way on to the Central Oregon Area Transportation Commission and I'm on the board of that commission. So, I am working very closely with ODOT to help mitigate the traffic issues in Sisters. Where I can do a lot of good for Sisters through that. Uh, areas where I need some work, I would say is going out into the public asking for their input because we kind of assume that if anybody has an issue they want to bring to the city, the city about, they'll, I mean, or they'll send us an email or they'll reach out to us. And that's not always true. Sometimes we need to go to them.
Thank you, Andrea. Gary, same question.
Sure. Um, I, I agree to some degree with what Andrea just said and that, and that is that with the change in the city council coming up, experience does matter. Um, we all bring our own experiences to the table and I think they're all valid and variable. I think the thing that would help from my perspective is my time with Malamaline and working with complex political issues and also comprehensive plan updates and funding and public budgeting, uh, that would not be new to me. I already understand how that works and I know how big board packets can be and I, and I agree with Jennifer, you need to read them, you need to consider them and make informed decisions. I also think that my greatest weakness is my age, to be real honest with you. Um, I think that it's not bad for a city council to have individuals on it that are not retired, uh, that are not white males, that are, are not, uh, folks who are, I'm not affluent, but I'm not poor, if you know what I mean. So, I think that we need to, to really consider as you, as you make your election decisions, um, what things are important to you. And, uh, so that's my strength and that's my weakness. And, uh, I thank you for your time, Gary.
Thank you very much, Gary. Elizabeth, same question.
So, uh, I would say that one of my biggest strengths, um, is just the ability to learn. Um, I just graduated cum laude from Oregon State University. Um, I went in with basic understandings of physics and chemistry and now have a working knowledge of thermodynamics and transport, transport phenomena and reaction engineering, all of which are words that I did not know what they meant going in. So, I have proven that I know how to learn. Um, and that's, sounds like coming from Andrea, that's a lot of what I'm gonna be doing initially on city council or what, um, whoever's elected will be doing on city council. Um, I also, through my education, honed skills in teamwork, problem solving, um, and informational analysis and synthesis. So, I think those are my, um, strengths as well as my, um, ties into the younger generation, um, and some of the more disadvantaged community members, um, through my group, um, so I can get more perspectives on there. As far as weaknesses go, I would say, oh shoot, I had a really good one and I forgot.
Well, thank you very much, Elizabeth. Your time is up, I'm sorry. Susan, same question.
Um, as I said at the start of this, um, I am a creative person, so I bring that to the table. Um, I will be dedicated. I am one who, once I decide to do something, I do it fully and wholeheartedly. I will have a learning curve. I do not have, uh, an understanding of working in government. Um, my only experience that I can bring to bear that's anywhere close is when I was the president for the Timber Creek HOA. Um, but I am one who will read anything that I'm supposed to read. I'm always gonna show up for the meetings. Um, I will listen. I'll work with others. I will work to have consensus. Um, I always share what I know and I always ask when I don't. Um, and I'm a collaborator and I guess my weakness is maybe I'm honest to a fault. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. So, next question. Andrea, you're first up for this one. And this will be the last question of our question part, then we'll go to final statements. Andrea, first, should the city of Sisters play a role in making Sisters more welcoming to a more diverse population, including visitors and residents?
The short answer is, is yes, we should be welcoming the community for all, all visitors and, and residents. There is a debate right now, COVID, that this isn't the best time to encourage visitors. And so, we have tried to ban down, uh, our extraordinary livability so that, uh, people don't come here during their COVID permanent and bring any sort of, uh, disease with them. So, uh, we will get back to doing that. Welcoming diverse people is something that is, is hard to do. We don't know the resources that are available that would reach a, a more diverse community. But we do advertise, I know, in Kambur, we advertise in Seattle and in California where there is much more of a diverse community. So, I'm, I'm hoping that as people come here to ski in the mountains and to enjoy our area, they see that it is welcoming for people of all colors and all races and all avenues of, of gender, however we want to put that and, and see that we are welcoming and will consider coming and staying.
Thank you very much, Andrea. Gary, you're next.
Yeah, I definitely believe that we can and need to do more to attract a more diverse population. And that's a broad spectrum statement, but the reality is we need to make the community welcoming for all individuals. Uh, when we talk about advertising, if we're trying to attract individuals for whom English is not a primary language, we need to be sure we have some of our advertisements appear in the language that we're targeting and that needs to be done by a native speaker, not by a person who's learned the language at school because there is a difference in how the idioms and colloquisms are used. We also need to have a school system that, that supports, uh, individuals who come in with other language skills and we need to make them feel welcome and we need to be ready to help them and address what they need to do. And we also need to have a community that feels safe for people who don't look like me to be here. Uh, the reality is, uh, that, um, it's uncomfortable sometimes for individuals to come if they feel like they're not going to be welcomed. And like, the things that happen in the stores, the language people use, the pictures that are portrayed, all of these things communicate what your community is about. And some of them are very subtle. And frankly, not all of us are prepared to know what they are. So you got to bring an expert, you're going to have to listen to people, and you're going to have to bite down on the hard bullet and listen and not be afraid to hear what you don't want to hear. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gary. Elizabeth, you're next.
Could you please repeat the question for me?
Happy to. Should the city of Sisters play a role in making Sisters more welcoming to a more diverse population, including visitors and residents?
Thank you. I do believe that we've got a large part to play in that. As a white person, I greatly enjoy our Western theme. I think it's fun. There are a lot of people who feel that it is oppressive and colonizational. I don't know if that's a word, but I just made it one. And so I think that, I don't think we need to get rid of it. I do think that we need to show in other ways that we are welcoming, we are open. My group Sisters for Social Justice actually was recently just working on a campaign with Out Central Oregon to get "You are welcome here" stickers in local Sisters businesses. We got some, not as many as we would have liked, to put them up. But I just feel like, things like that, that make it obvious that we're not everything that one would immediately assume just looking at the facade on the outside of our buildings. So I think that we need to be very intentional in being welcoming to people of all races and orientations. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Susan, you're next?
Yes, thank you. On this topic, a while back in the Nugget, a woman who has children or a child of color shared her story. And I found it very moving that in Sisters, in elementary and in the high school, middle school, that that child compared to her children that were not of color, had a different experience and not a nice one. So part of being a welcoming city is also within the city itself. I too, like Elizabeth, am out on the street for Black Lives Matter. And some of the local people, not the tourists driving through, but some of the local people have come up to me and actually confronted why I'm there and do I have a right to be there. So again, that's the part of the welcoming that I think we need to look at locally. And I know there are organizations that actually train and provide to a city training. And then once that city passes certain phases of that training, they become certified. So that might be something that as council, we could look into, welcoming city certification. The other thing-
No, my first, your time is up. Sorry. Thank you. Jennifer, you're next?
Because I think the city definitely could help in making, ensuring Sisters are a welcoming community. It's not only their responsibility, you know, it takes a lot of groups in the community to make that happen. And that runs a wide range. I mean, you know, what the city can do is something kind of boring and rote is making sure that, you know, if the city is hiring positions, to make sure that they're, you know, the job application process is kind of, you know, open and enabled to be understood by people of various, you know, men, women, different cultural backgrounds, making sure that there's, you know, there's been a lot of improvement in words being used and job descriptions to help make sure that there's more diversity in job applicants, because they were finding that, you know, certain words and phrases were being very exclusive and not inviting in other people. And so some things are kind of as simple as that, you know, can certainly be done, obviously, working with, you know, the chamber and on our messaging, our outward messaging, making sure that maybe we're using people in our community or models that don't look, you know, too honky like some of us. And making sure that we're showing a variety of people enjoying the community, I think will be really helpful.
Thank you so much, Jennifer. We're now going to move on to our closing statements. Each closing statement will be two minutes long. Again, these were picked out of a hat. Andrea, you're first. If you would like to do your closing statement. Thank you.
Thank you. If anything good can come out of this COVID epidemic, it is gratitude that we all have going, that we're going through it in Sisters country. I refer to it as being locked down in paradise, since we have the luxury of having extensive natural space in our neighborhood, you know, full neighbors who are caught daily out of doing their best to see that we all come out of this pandemic in one piece. When I'm asked why I'm running for city council, I reply, it is what I can give back, this incredibly special place. Some community members volunteer for the fire department, help with special events that make Sisters special, or gather funding to support the media among us. Because of my experience, I am most suited to work in our local government. However, our secret is out, and growth is coming to Sisters. My pledge is to view every decision I make on city council through the lens, whether it will preserve, protect, or enhance the livability of Sisters. We're all in this together. I have lots of experience that I would like to share with new councillors that come on. But I wish you would give me another opportunity on council to finish some of the projects that I'm already involved in and would like to see through to fruition. So thank you very much. And please vote for me for Sister City Council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Andrea. Gary, you're up next?
Thank you. The city council is an important role that I want to have a part in. In my time at Malamalene, I said when I left, I'm not going to run for public office again. And I was pretty serious about it. And then I came here and started talking to members of the community, expressed my opinion on some issues, wrote a couple letters to the editor. And the next day, I had people saying, you know, you might want to think about city council. And the more I thought about it, I agree with what's been said. If you want to be a part of community, you need to be ready to offer a community the skill set that you have, to be willing to listen to the members of the community, and make decisions based on the best interests of the community as a whole. And that includes growth, and making sure that growth is managed, but is also available, and that you don't have monolithic sort of developments. You have variety in the community. And I think that I am an individual who can work both sides of the issue. And I think I'm an individual who can make a decision. And I will make one pledge to you, if anything comes up before the city council in which I have a conflict of interest, you will know it immediately, and I will recuse myself. And that's one of the reasons I'm running too. Some things happened that I wasn't comfortable with. And I want you to know that if I'm your city councillor, you aren't going to have to worry about whether or not my decisions are best for me. You're going to have to worry about whether or not my decisions are best for the city of Sisters. Thank you. And Sisters country.
Thank you very much, Gary. Jennifer, you're next?
Thank you. I'm excited to run for city council. It's a wonderful community. I think there's, you know, a lot of potential for a community this size to be nimble and creative in their solutions. And I'm excited to be a part of that process, to not only, to kind of keep Sisters the great community that it is, but bring it into the future, whether it's next year or 30 years. You know, good planning is critical now to make sure that we have this wonderful community that we all love so much, continue on into the future for, not only for us, but of future generations. I'm also excited to run because I feel like there is a, you know, a hole in the council, and kind of in government in general, in the area. There's kind of an underrepresentation of, you know, Gen Xers and millennials in our government. I think it's because a lot of us are really busy working and raising families. And it's not like we don't have the interest or the passion. It's just a kind of a time issue. I'm at a point in my life where I do have a little bit of free time to dedicate to making our community better and more inclusive and stronger, and not only environmentally, economically, and also for other people who live here. So I'm really excited for the opportunity. And I'll tell you that I'll work really hard to represent everybody in the community and the people who do enjoy the community and rely on the community for work or for respite, or for schooling. And please vote for Jennifer Letts this November. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. Susan, you're next for your final?
Hi, again, little quote, "Service to others is the rent you pay for your room here on earth." That's Muhammad Ali. So yeah, I'm running for Sister City Council because it is important to be involved as a citizen at the local, state, and national levels, however one can. Not many of us can give time to volunteer in governance, even though we may care deeply. It is said that all politics are local. And after passing of my father, I joined Invisible Sisters Steering Committee, Citizens Climate Lobby, and I'm a member of League of Women Voters Deschutes County. Because I love to help, and for many years I have made, because I love to help, for many years I have made and donated quilts to several groups here in Sisters, the Sister High School Jazz Choir for fundraising, to Habitat for when they dedicate a new home, and to Quilt for Kids. In 2019, Invisible Sisters had been looking for candidates for the Sister City Council seats that were opening without much luck. And I was encouraged to run. And after some research this summer, I realized I would be quite able to take on that role. And so here I am. So if you have any questions or comments, my email is cobb4citycouncil@gmail.com. And I do hope you vote for me November 3. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Susan. Elizabeth, you're up next?
Okay, so I'm going to begin my time by coming back to the question about my weaknesses, because I feel like it's not fair that I never answered that for you. So I will say I don't have a lot of experience. However, no matter what, you're going to have two councillors who are on a learning curve. So I hope to be one of those. Also, I will always put human beings over money, which is not the best thing for government always. But I feel like my fellow people on the council will help temper me down on that, as well as bureaucracy and red tape could be hard for me. I like things to happen. So just the slow process could be difficult. But I'm willing to work through that to get stuff done. So, um, those are my weaknesses. Now, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters and City Club for hosting this forum, as well as all the sponsors who made it possible. I also want to thank the other candidates for participating and just giving people in Sisters a choice. I do believe that no matter what happens, Sisters will elect three great city councillors. And finally, I want to thank all the people watching this for taking the time to watch it and learn more about the candidates, and for those who sent in questions. So hopefully, you vote for me. If you don't, you'll have great city councillors anyway. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you all for answering all of the questions. Thank you to the candidates for participating in today's forum, and for also being some of the most civil that we've seen. And thanks to City Club of Central Oregon and the League of Women Voters of Deschutes County for partnering together to get this information out. Remember, if you enjoyed today's forum and would like to help cover the cost, please consider making a donation to City Club of Central Oregon on their website at citiclubco.org. If you are interested in becoming a member of the League of Women Voters of Deschutes County or making a contribution, please contact the league through their website at l w v deschutes.org. Thank you to our candidate forum series sponsors, Deschutes Public Library and Buchanan Schmidt LLC. We want to also thank the Sisters Nugget for helping with the promotion of this forum and when we did local voter registration. The candidate forum will be to shoot, tomorrow's candidate forum will be Deschutes County Sheriff, and will air Thursday, October 15 at 7:00 PM. Please be sure to watch. Thank you for your interest in keeping democracy alive. This program will be available tonight at 7:00 PM. And this was pre-recorded Wednesday, October 14, 2020. Thank you for joining us, and thank you for voting.